That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Oregon.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Oregon.
The laws and ordinances of the city of Sweet Home.
The laws and ordinances of the city of Sweet Home.
And the rules and regulations of the Sweet Home Police Department.
And the rules and regulations of the Sweet Home Police Department.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties of the office.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties of the office.
To which I have been appointed.
To which I have been appointed.
In and for the city of Sweet Home.
In and for the city of Sweet Home.
According to the law and to the best of my ability.
According to the law and the best of my ability.
Congratulations, gentlemen.
I have one more part of the ceremony, and it's actually the badges on. So if we could get Tater, if you'd like to come on up. And then Lieutenant Gertman, if you'd like to come on up. Good luck.
It's not an assault if you make a mistake there.
Both probably deserved it at some point.
Hey, before you guys leave, I've got to talk to you a little bit because this is the way I am. I'm sure that the chief is not aware, medium aware of the fact that we can't afford both vehicles. And so I looked up today, and our new vehicles are going to be electric bicycles. And so just be aware of that. You know, in those kinds of things, to be safe. Thanks for coming.
This thing keeps walking up every 10 seconds. So I'm trying to get the fuck out of this. This is recording for now. You can have it. You can have it.
Just leave it right here.
But it's recording.
I will not touch that. Get their app.
Thank you, Chief. Okay, Mr. Mayor, give him a turn back up in one second. You want to recognize this young lady on the end. She's a YAC member. It's so good to have one of our high school kids here. Her name is Deanna Herrera. Move on now. Recognition of visitors and hearing of petitions. Anybody like to report and hear from the council?
Am I supposed to ask me? Sorry, I don't know. Do practice. And where were we? Welcome to Hot House. So first of all, I just want to say thank you to the council. Thank you for seeing me. I appreciate the work that you guys do. I know the challenges that you guys face. And so I come here in respect. I also come in respect to Blair. I've worked with Blair. I appreciate the work he does. And I just wanted to acknowledge that as well. So I don't know how many received my email today. Okay, yeah, it came late. And it was supposed to be, and I just was not able to get it out soon. And I apologize for that. So read it at your leisure. And really, it's about concern as a business owner in town. And it's a same old story that I dealt with as a Chamber of Commerce board member. And that is, it's the communication process between the city and the local businesses. And I know the struggle getting local businesses to contribute. And there, what really brought this to light was the 13th Street, 13th Avenue, sorry, closure for the festival. And what really pushed it forward was the June, Tuned Up Tuesday, which we love, and I wish I was there right now, to be honest. But I found out about it a week ahead of time. And it's, as I see it, it's just another indication that we have a communication issue. It's been ongoing. I honestly, I don't know how we take care of it. But all I'm asking is, and all I really asked in my emails, a formal request for a process, a letter. Something, just a professional courtesy as a letter stating, this is what's happening in our community. And your business has potentially, is potentially going to be affected by it. Do you have input? You know, we're just trying to provide information to you. And you know, we're looking for your input, if you'd like to provide it. Also, in that letter, I did say, I did state that I understand that the streetscape, the city's streetscape, get them right, has been in process for quite a while. And I probably should have known that. I didn't hear about it until probably a couple of months ago. And I didn't really move forward on that at the time because I didn't think it was, I didn't think it was going to go through. Blair clarified that, you know, it's not set in stone, although I, the one council meeting that I have been to this year, you know, I did see that you guys gave it a stamp of approval, which in my mind meant that when we have the money, we're going forward. All that without input for myself, input from many other businesses around me. And again, I won't get into the details of that. But I just, I would request a more formal process that seeks us out directly, or at least notifies us directly, rather than us having to find out, you know, indirectly. Does that make sense? Does that sound unreasonable?
It's very reasonable. And like we talked today, I was kind of a little bit unhappy, because I didn't find out you weren't notified. On behalf of the city, I apologize for that, because I think we should have communicated that. I was under the assumption, of course, you don't have to use them, that you weren't notified, and so was surrounding businesses. And that was my assumption, and my apologies. You should be notified. There's no excuse for it. What are we talking about?
And it's a learning, it's a learning process. And, you know, my, my only grievance with it is the fact that the jamboree got caught in the middle. And although it's better for me that the event wasn't on 13th Street, I, after some adjustments to the initial 28-hour closure of the street, I was satisfied with that resolution, and so were the businesses around, which I communicated to them as soon as I found out. And, you know, the event could have stayed, and it would have been okay. My issue was, again, that should have, and I made the request, and it was a little late, I suppose, but I did make the request that there was a conversation before there was a decision made about that. And it didn't happen that way. And I actually made a formal apology to Robert Shamick because I felt like we were the catalyst. And there are other repercussions to us because of that. And I don't know if you quite understand that, but small town politics, these are the kinds of things that don't make for good reputation. So, and I don't want that, obviously, I don't want it for my business, but I don't want it for the city. I don't want it for anyone that is involved in trying to make this downtown better. Because my wife and I have been advocates for that from day one, since we started our business here. And we want that, Mr. Mayor. We want to be a part of the solution, a part of the problem. And I apologize if in some factor of this we were. Admittedly, I was not as involved as I have been the last year and a half because of COVID. I've been completely immersed in my business. So, you know, I'm going to use that as my excuse, but it's not, I'm not without fault here. So anyway, formal request to somehow be able to provide the businesses with this information. I know that that is a bit of a struggle because you don't necessarily know all the new businesses in town. I think there's a solution to that. I've been an advocate for, for a business license for, you know, forever. Because I think there's value in it both ways, for the city and for the businesses. But I'd be glad to talk about that later. So thank you for listening.
Well, Dave, again, our apologies. We assumed you were letting know about it. However, the thing is, just for your information, we have had behind closed door conversations that we do need to provide all business owners notification or potential, possibly something to do. I can't speak for the council, but I'm pretty confident the council is in agreement that we are all about trying to help downtown businesses. And that's our goal, to help downtown businesses. But it should not, it should not come from the impact of the business. I don't think your business or any other business downtown should be impacted by what we do. It should be a benefit appearance. So I apologize for us not.
And I realize that's not always the case. I mean, it can't always be that way. Not everyone does it willingly. But at the same time, you know, by soliciting input ahead of the solution, you can improve the solution. And I know it's not, resources are, you know, you can't have somebody out there. You don't have the resources to go individually meet with people. That's very difficult. You know, there really, I, there has to be another solution. And so I appreciate you guys considering that and considering my input.
Thank you, Dave, for coming forward, and I totally agree with you. So thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, have you seen the streetscape thing that we had, that we proposed at all?
Yes, and it has been discussed, you know, Blair and I have discussed.
Yeah, I like the idea. I like the concept. I really do. But we talked a lot about blocking that road off for those things. And especially for the seed guy. He, all his trucks might come down that road. He'd have to probably park on Long Street and double it up and all that stuff. But I think it's a good plan. I do. And I think in the, in the long run, you would end up with more parking spaces because they'll be at an angle. If you saw those, there'd be like eight or nine of them instead of three. So I'm glad you came and talked to us.
13th Avenue Streetscape, it's a good plan, but it's not filed in stone. And there, and we've had discussions about, you know, egress and a lot of issues on that street. So, you know, I think it'd be good, but we still got a lot of planning to do, if we're to do anything on 13th. The main, concept of the streetscape for downtown, the main, mainstream, long street, obviously, is going to cost a tremendous amount of money. I wish we had all that money in the world, we could do it. But the reason for the streetscape was, the intent was to help downtown businesses. That's the ultimate goal of what it is. So we're encouraging all businesses downtown. If you've not seen the streetscape, pass it on to all the businesses. Please come to the city and take a look at it, because it is a good plan. I'm not sure when or ever it will come to fruition, but I mean, it's a nice plan. So that's our goal, is to really enhance and improve our downtown. So thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
Thank you.
I have another visitor, Ms. Curtis.
Hi. All right.
Oh, okay. Okay. That's fine. We'll move forward. Anybody, no one else wants to come before to be heard before council? Move on now to old business. RCA for Radiator Supply House barbecue amplified sound permit.
Yes, before you, Mr. Mayor, is an application submitted by Radiator Supply House for their Icebox, Icebox BBQ, National BBQ Cook-Off that's coming up in first part of July. And the public, the PA permit, or the request for the PA permit is for all three days of the event. And the times listed are from 12:00, 12:00 in the afternoon, noon to 10:00 PM. And so I know Mr. Garrett's here, if you have any questions specific to that. This VA permits before you because the sound is anticipated to travel beyond 1,000 feet, which according to our municipal code, the council gets to approve those requests for that. So if you have any questions for myself, Officer, Captain Ogden's is the one that actually performed the review on this request. And so either he or myself or Mr. Garrett should be able to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions at council?
Are the neighbors aware you're planning this event?
I've spoke, I or Wes Collins has spoke to virtually every neighbor from our place all the way to Highway 20.
Have you got any complaints about the possibility? Because it looks, it's Fourth of July weekend, so they might be happy about it, so I don't.
I haven't got any sound complaints.
Sound complaint, probably parking, right?
There may be.
The city has received a few calls from the neighbors, a few of the neighbors expressing concerns about the access road along there. We did have the city attorney do some research, and the city maintains an easement, as does Radiator Supply House, to access the property along that road. And we've communicated that with the property owners to let them know. They still aren't happy about it, but.
If anybody wants to go down and say hi, and on behalf of the city in this event, that'd be awesome.
Well, Mr. Mayor, if I may, one of my concerns would be access to fire engines. And I'm sure the guy took care of that. Because you're going to have to have access to get through both buildings between them. Because if you can't, you're going to burn it down. And so that would be.
This is a party, Dave. Come on. Nick Tyler is the new chief, and he has been down and walked the whole facility.
I was sure this had taken care of that. Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
But anybody that wants to come down, look it over and give us any more ideas, we are open to that.
Any other questions at council? Any council directive?
So moved as recommended.
Second.
Motion second by roll call, please.
Counselor Coleman?
Yes.
Mayor Mahler?
Yes.
Counselor Trask?
Yes.
Counselor Gorley?
Yes.
Counselor Richards?
Yes.
The record show five eyes, no nays, two abs and approval of the sound permit. Thanks, Will.
Yeah, thank you again for partnering and making this event possible. I know there's been a lot here that's underwent this. But today I did get another notice that another team from Kansas City is coming in. So it's neat to see a lot of outside of Sweet Home coming in and bringing some money here and spending it here in our town. So thank you.
Thank you. Next up, discussion only, Railroad Depot Building.
Thank you, Mayor, Counselor. We don't probably have much of an update, but we did want to touch bases with you guys again. If you remember last month, we brought an RCA to you guys discussing the condition of the depot. And I think the response was back is, we kind of needed to reach out to the community. And what we did was, we asked Benny to come out and write an article. It reached out to a lot of people. We have had a couple of feedbacks from people that in the community, but nothing concrete, no financial people that want to come back and take it. I think what we'll do is, unless we get any other direction, we'll probably bring that RCA back to you guys again, maybe in a couple of weeks, unless you guys tell us different. But we did want to check back with that.
Questions at council?
Mr. Mayor, I, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but that thing's got to be moved before we can continue the homeless.
Before we can finish the road. We got pipelines, we got the conduits in, but there is, that road won't be complete until that time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we're going to have to make a decision. I don't know where we would get the money to move it.
Right, yeah. So hopefully, this discussion, maybe we'll wait a couple more weeks and see what happens from there. We will be able to move the trailer at some point, the annex. That's going to happen sooner than later. We will be able to get that onto the property. And just the road, it's the road and finishing everything else. It's really, that depot's going to hold it up.
Well, Mr. Mayor, if you've, if you've seen it, I don't know how you're going to lift it and keep it in one piece. I just don't, it's, there's, or it's rotted through and every, the, it's, it's not going to be an easy situation. And I don't know how we're going to get somebody to do it to begin with. And then what's our option? So I don't, I mean, I'd love to have it stay. That's not a problem at all. But the problem is getting it, getting it moved, and where are we going to move it to? You know, so that's, that's my biggest concern.
The thought is, if we can move it at least 20 more feet, 30 feet, it would be on city property right adjacent to the railroad easement. There would be enough room for it to sit. It's just how we do that and the cost, I think, not in good condition.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Greg. Next up, RCA, Sweet Home Rotary Club Special Event Permit Application.
I think I'll be speaking on this in somewhat of a dual role slash as the representative of the Sweet Home Rotary Club. A short time ago, we had discussions about opening the access to the fireworks show that will be held on July 9th down at the Quarry Park property. We discussed allowing public access down there in a controlled manner so that our community could witness the fireworks in just a better location than the previous years. With that, though, came some challenges as far as an organization that was going to step forward that had the capacity to actually manage the event so it's safe and organized fashion. And the Volunteer Association with the Fire Department, you know, didn't have the staffing or the resources to do it because of the rest of the event that they're putting on. And other organizations just, we're all busy. And so the Sweet Home Rotary Club is requesting to be able to, I'll call it, manage that event, that parking event, and utilize it as a fundraiser where the proceeds would go to two different sources. Half of it would go toward, back towards the Volunteer Fire Association for next year's fireworks. And the other half would go to the Sweet Home Rotary Club programs, which are heavily involved in scholarships. All the funds go back to either scholarships for high school students and/or the Dolly Parton Imagination Library books for young children. And so Rotary Club is submitting this request to see if it's something that the city's willing to entertain as far as utilizing and being responsible for the parking at the event. Anticipated charge, we just had a discussion today at the Rotary meeting, is $10 a carload. We felt that was fairly reasonable. I've been in contact with the Lynn Shuttle Bus as well. And Donna's assured me that she can develop a route where we could get individuals in through the shuttle bus with at least two different pickup points in town so that those who, who either couldn't access it or may not be able to afford the $10 could, could be able to utilize the shuttle bus for their dollar round trip and get down there to the event as well. Parking will be separated from where individuals can stand and sit to watch the show. And also, the insurance certificate has been attached from the Rotary Club. With that, any questions associated with that or input? It's kind of a new idea. We'd love to be able to open it up to the community. And maybe in years, depending on how it goes, expand it, you know, to different things down there during that day, but.
Any questions at council?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second by roll call, please.
Mayor Mahler?
Yes.
Counselor Trask?
Yes.
Counselor Gorley?
Yes.
Counselor Richards?
Yes.
Counselor Coleman?
Yes.
The record show five eyes, no nays, two abs and approval of the Special Event Permit Application with the Rotary Club. Thanks, Jeff. RCA, the Hilltop Market OLCC Change of Ownership.
And I'll be speaking as the chief of police under this topic. Somehow, this is my show, apparently. I don't know what happened. We have a change of ownership for a liquor license here in Sweet Home. The Hilltop Market has changed ownership. And actually, those that are buying it, or that have bought it, actually own the Foster Lake Market as well. So this is, I hate to say a formality for OLCC, but OLCC really has the final say in all these matters. We have looked into the request and find no reason to deny it. We've had no, no issues with their existing store. And they've been operating under a temporary liquor license for several months.
Any questions at council? Council directive?
So moved as recommended?
Second.
A motion second by roll call, please.
Counselor Trask?
Yes.
Counselor Gorley?
Yes.
Counselor Richards?
Yes.
Counselor Coleman?
Yes.
Mayor Mahler?
Yes. The record show five eyes, no nays, two abs and approval of the Hilltop Market OLCC Change of Ownership. This time at 7:05, open up for public hearing. President of the 1822, adopting a budget for 2022, 2023 appropriations of levying taxes for the public hearing. This time, I will ask for any counsel bias, conflict of interest, or ex parte communications. Counsel Richards?
No.
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 The record show we have five noes. This time, we'll turn it over for staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before you is the draft resolution for the adoption of the budget for the 2023 fiscal year. The Budget Committee approved the budget during a meeting that they had on April 20th in the total sum of $32,053,009. The, they made a couple of changes, which are documented in the approved budget document. The LB1 was published on May 24th, as was that approved budget document. It is available online. And certainly, we can provide copies to, we'll provide copies to counselors if you wish to have a paper copy. But otherwise, that's all I have for you in that regard.
Okay. This time, I'll open it up for the floor for any public comment. Anybody like the public might come forth, testify. Okay, it's 7:07. I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. At this time, we'll open up for discussion with council. Any discussion with council?
Mr. Mayor, if I might, we have a couple of requests of the council regarding the budget document. A couple of changes that we would like you to consider for, in time for the next meeting. The first one, we, the council approved a supplemental budget for the police department earlier this fiscal year to the tune of $75,000 for a, for an access control upgrade at the police department. If you'll remember, part of the discussion around that was that the building is 20-plus years old. Access control was installed with that building when it was built, and it no longer, it's no longer a viable option in the long term. It is limping along for now, and we'll knock on wood for that. But at some point, that needs to be replaced. And so we were moving forward with that. We've learned from the, from the contractor that was selected that we won't be able to get that in before the end of the fiscal year. And so we're requesting that $75,000 be added to the police department's expenditure authority for next fiscal year to accommodate that, that addition, the replacement of that access control system. Additionally, we are, we've been working with ODOT and the state to obtain the $500,000 for the RRFB crossing at 22nd and Main. Those funds have finally come in. They came in right toward the end of May. And at this point, we are awaiting additional documents from ODOT to send the appropriations to. to them. There, it requires an amendment to the agreement that was already signed for the ADA ramps on Highway 20 and Highway 228. However, in order to send those funds, we'll need some appropriations. We are not entirely certain yet as to the timing of when ODOT is going to request those funds, whether it's going to be in this current fiscal year or in the next fiscal year. So what we are asking for is a, another change to the budget document to incorporate that $500,000 next fiscal year in case it is not completed before this fiscal year runs out. Our guess is that it will not be completed in time, given that the council still has to, ODOT has some, some process to go through. And then the city council still has to approve that amendment. So we're asking for $500,000 to be added to Fund 585, the PATH program, in order to distribute those funds next year without some sort of budget concern. That change exceeds 5,000 or 10% of the allocated expenditure authority by the, by the Budget Committee at this time. And so we will have to republish our LB1 document in order to add that. There is enough time. We'll send that in at the end of the week if the council is amenable to that change. But those are the two changes that we are requesting to next year's budget before it is adopted.
Any questions of council?
Probably my ears.
Did you ask for, when you started out, did you ask for people in favor of the budget? Or did you just ask for comments on the budget?
According to my Chichi, just comments, you just asked.
Okay.
All the comments.
Okay. That, I'd heard favors and I was going, well.
No.
Okay. Got you. It's my ears.
Okay, this is adoption of the budget for 2022, 2023. So we, we want a council directive for that and are just waiting till.
We're just looking for your feedback at this time. We wanted to get the public hearing here. If there were any necessary changes that required the, the republishing of the LB1, this gives us the timeframe to do that. So staff would be looking for some direction on, on the changes if, if the council is, accepts those so that we can republish the document. And then we look for council action at your June 28th meeting for the actual adoption.
Mr. Mayor, so we, we already got the money?
We just, we, yes, we received the $500,000 within the last three weeks.
Okay.
So I, I just need a consensus?
A consensus would work for this, for this case, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Fine with that.
Okay. I'll make the changes and republish the LB1 and we'll look for adoption hopefully at your June 28th meeting.
Okay, so push off the adoption to June 28th. Next up is RCA or 2022 Oregon Jamboree Special Events Application.
It's that time of year again. The Oregon Jamboree has submitted a special events permit application with their, as usual, it's quite thorough and it's in your packet. Three requests that they have for the 2022 Oregon Jamboree are, one, a complete closure of Sankey Park and Weddell Bridge from 6:00 AM on Monday on July 25th until 10:00 PM on Monday, August 1st, 2022. Two, 18th Avenue from Long Street to Mountain View to be closed and blocked off to through traffic from 7:00 AM on Thursday, July 28th through 9:00 PM on Sunday, July 31st at the direction of the Chief of Police. Residential traffic will be allowed to increase, ingress and egress by use of special permits. And the portion of 18th Avenue immediately to, adjacent to the concert grounds and serving no residential properties shall be completely blocked, blocked off to all vehicles from 11:00 AM on July 28th to 10:00 PM on July 31st. In addition, during the above timeframe, all areas of 18th Avenue between Long Street Concert Ground, including the 1800 block of Calmaya Street, shall be designated and, and signed as disabled parking only. And the Chief of Police is directed to enforce the provisions of ORS 811.615. Also involved is approval of OLCC temporary sales, temporary alcohol sales license applications. Waiver of, of Sweet Home Municipal Code 5.12.010, which is the transient merchant license requirements for all Oregon Jamboree vendors. They're also asking for waiver of water service, equipment, and some employee service fees, granting of, of public address service system permits, one for the main stage, another for Sankey Park, and a third for Thursday night only on 18th Avenue adjacent to the great, the Jamboree grounds. They're also seeking city permission to use city property, including a portion of Sankey Park for beer gardens and recommended approval. And they're asking for approval of liquor license for that area. They're also asking for permission to use Upper Sankey Park, North Side Park, and City Hall for camping. Waiver of the event fee is established under Sweet Home Municipal Code 5.04.010, which is $50 per day. Assistance from the City of Sweet Home Police Department for concert security, safety, and assistance at the bus loading area each night, and general assistance from the City of Sweet Home. The packet is quite large, as you can, as you've noticed. So if you have any questions, we can certainly address those at, at this time. And Peggy Curtis from the Jamboree is also present tonight.
Do we have any questions of council?
Mayor, have we always closed Sankey Park down five days ahead of time? Okay. All right.
I mean, I don't know about the exact timing, but it's always been closed ahead of time of significant now.
It's been closed for the last three years on a Monday. Any concerts, we did go ahead and close it down because we did use it for the kids zone and we had it as a entryway for, we have to still fence it off, otherwise people can, you know, obviously come right across the bridge. But this year we will have a really large stage over there. It's not as big as the, the main stage, but it's much bigger than we have had in the past. So we're going to have bigger acts over there. Cult Board has quite a cultic following, but we actually are expecting quite a larger crowd over there this year, so.
Questions of council? Any council directive?
So moved as recommended.
Second.
Motion second by roll call, please.
Counselor Richards?
Yes.
Counselor Coleman?
Yes.
Mayor Mahler?
Yes.
Counselor Trask?
Yes.
Counselor Gorley?
Yes.
The record show five eyes, no nays, two absent approval of the Oregon Jamboree Special Events Application. Thanks for coming this evening.
Thank you.
You guys don't have any other questions, right? Before I leave? We're super excited about this year. It's going to be great. I hope you guys are all there.
Thanks. Thanks for coming. Thanks for coming this evening. Take care. Next up RCA for wastewater treatment plant interested contractors, requalification.
You're up, Trish. Aw, thanks. Good evening. We are here to talk about the wastewater plant again tonight. Our design engineers, West Yost, are racing through final design and we anticipate bidding this summer for Phase One. Part of our prep work for that is that West Yost has recommended that we prequalify contractors for general contracting and electrical contracting on this project to make sure that we get somebody that really can build a $50 million project. And the electrical subcontractors, West Yost felt was a very important element of the prequalification because this is heavy equipment. It's not like your typical commercial kind of equipment. And so we are asking for council approval to post this qualification solicitation. It is pretty similar to an RFP. And so that is why we felt we wanted to get council's blessing before we posted it. Are there any questions?
Any questions of council? Council directive?
So moved as recommended.
Second then.
Motion second by roll call, please.
Counselor Gorley?
Yes.
Counselor Trask?
Yes.
Mayor Mahler?
Yes.
Counselor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Richards?
Yes.
Record show five eyes, no nays, two absent approval of the contract prequalification. Thanks, Trish.
Thank you.
Take care. Keep up the good work. Okay, nothing under first reading, second reading, move on down to third readings of ordinance bills. We have an RCA for ordinance number three by 2022 by title only.
I oppose. Ordinance Bill number three for 2022, ordinance number 1303, an ordinance amending the official zoning map.
Any final questions of the council regarding this? Council directive?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second by roll call, please.
Counselor Richards?
Yes.
Counselor Coleman?
Yes.
Mayor Mahler?
Yes.
Counselor Trask?
Yes.
Counselor Gorley?
Yes.
The record show five eyes, no nays, two absent approval of ordinance number three for 2022. Reports of committees, any committees reports? Once again, thank you for coming. Do you have any questions? Thank you again for coming. We appreciate your, your involvement in this, in our council and their school. Reports of cities? I have no reports. City manager report?
Just, just a few items this evening. Wanted to let you know that we will be holding an admin and finance property meeting on Monday, June 20th to talk about the vacant buildings. And we'll, Blair has invited the business owners from the community to participate as well as the committee members. And we look forward to that meeting on the 20th. Also, just an announcement that on Friday, presuming that we have great weather, we've got movies in the park, starting with our first one at 8:30. Sankey Park, be there. The first movie will be Encanto?
Encanto.
Encanto.
I figured it was Singin' in the Ring.
We hope that's not it. We hope we have a lovely evening. Joy from the library will be there and we'll have some activities for the library as well. And so it should be a fun evening.
If I may, Kristy, the rain date is the following Friday. If, if there is rain, we don't have equipment that can survive the rain, so.
We have a backup plan, so it's going to be beautiful. Followed by Saturday, we have the Safety Fair beginning at 9:00 AM to noon at the Police Department. That's a great event for our community. We're going to have some hot dogs, drinks, and should be a great day as well. I also wanted to let you know that our summer reading program starts this Thursday. And we will also be holding kids art in the park, in Sankey Park, on the dates that are posted there on the screen beginning June 24th. Wow. Let's see, what else do we have going on? The final thing I just wanted to announce to the public this evening is that we've extended the city manager recruitment. We'll be reviewing applications with the council on July 6th. And so if there are community members that know of someone interested in applying for the position, we have the information posted on our website and look forward to participating in the process as we move forward. And that concludes my report for the, this evening.
Thanks, Kristy. Department Director Report. Any questions of the Department Directors? Any of the Department Directors, like any feedback? City Attorney, anything? Council Business Good Order, we have a project close up. Topic wastewater treatment plan directive legislative portion, House Bill 5530 for 2 million.
We just wanted to update the council on the, on this specific appropriation. This was a, a direct lottery allocation from the state legislature. Goodness, several years, a few years ago at this point. But as of earlier this, this calendar year, we have finished drawing down the $2 million in funds that we were originally allocated for the wastewater treatment plant. And this letter is just an informational letter to indicate that that is closed out and moving forward.
Thanks, Brown. Is there anything else of council? We're adjourned our council meeting at 7:23.